Good evening everybody. Good evening, everybody. Adam Clark.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Cattistrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims. Councilmember Petagoras absent. Neil LaBrosse.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:44-6. Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bowls board in City Hall.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. With that, we'll turn it over to the city manager, please.
Good evening, mayor and council and invited guest. This is the City of Hackensack's Committee, the whole agenda for March 12th. First item is a Vegetative Management Response Act. This is in reference to an active NJSA 40:64-12 would expand the purview of any public utilities such as electric, gas, water, and pipeline or cable vision company to clear, remove, cut, or destroy any tree, shrub, or plant without municipal permission or consultation, if done to install or maintain any structure or fixtures. Basically, whereas utilities from local regulation penalty if they claim to be acting in good faith with a due diligence and reasonable judgment. I think what this is trying to do is to stop the utility companies coming and decide, well, we need to clear the line, so we're just going to chop the daylights out of these trees that we plant street line, curb line, and, you know, the end justifies so much as the means. And when residents call up and complain, what did you do to the beautiful trees in front of our residents or along our nicely wooded street? Utility company chopped them, we don't know anything about it, and we have no say. So this is to provide the ability for the utilities to respond to cities before they decide that we're going to warm up the chipper and do what we want. And we're asking for the support of councils. And this program is countywide. Next is the condo cooperative advisory board. There is a letter from Constance Ovino who is going to resign because of her employment conditions to step down as the chairperson for the condo board. Connie wants to remain on the board, but just not the chairman. Unfortunately, she did not offer a recommendation of somebody to fill the chairman's spot. So that's something to be determined. I know Annette's here. You know, she likes to come to meetings. But Connie has not provided or offered someone to step into that position. But mayor and council obviously appoint, so whatever you folks choose to do.
Okay.
I spoke with Annette prior to this as well, and I think what would make most sense is to have some suggestions come from the board. They know their members the best, and we want to find someone who really wants to do this because, you know, it is a time-consuming activity, not so much for the monthly meetings, but preparing and coordinating with all the other folks. So I asked Annette, she has a couple of ideas to kind of feel a few people out and give us some suggestions, and that would be my recommendation, that we kind of take it from there, if everybody else agrees.
I agree with that.
But I have to say that Connie and also Murray, in their prior service, have served the city well and attended meetings and always been supportive and proactive. And I thank them for that.
Plus really built that board up. I mean, there was only a handful of folks that attended. You know, now there's a lot more, and they really do deserve a lot of credit because it's not easy to get people to join sometimes. And they were very successful at doing that. And the whole board in general, I mean, they, you know, have been successful in identifying problems and issues from the city and really taking them on and being quite successful, you know, going all the way back to LTAC and, you know, the stuff with the toxic waste and helping support the flight path. I mean, they've, they're on, really have a good sense for some of the issues in the city, and they're willing to invest the time and effort to get some of these things done. So I too am very appreciative of all their help, and I'm sure that we'll find someone new to take it over.
Number three is the intro, the ordinance for the microbreweries. Steve, you have any comments you want me to?
I can speak. I can speak to it. So, as we all know, a second microbrewery opened up within the city. And currently, our ordinance governing licensed alcohol establishments doesn't really address microbreweries. They're different from most establishments in town in that they are licensed under the state's authority rather than the city's authority. So we've established an ordinance that will just cover some basic rules and regulations for microbreweries, making sure that their staff are properly licensed, have a bar card, that they don't serve intoxicated patrons, and so forth. Because of the nature of this ordinance, you know, you're familiar, when we do traffic changes, a lot of times we have to send them to the Department of Transportation. In this case, we do have to send it to the Division of ABC in Trenton. I did so several weeks ago, hadn't heard back, finally got through to one of their senior people who told me that they would make it a priority to address. So based upon that, and they said, look, we don't really see any immediate issues with it, it should be fine, we'll give it a more thorough review and send you a letter clearing this by the end of the month. So my hope is, by introducing it today, we'll have this letter by March 26th meeting.
It's not on today.
Sorry, it's not on today? All right, then we're going to wait.
It's on March 26th.
So it'll be on in the March 26th meeting for first reading, and then at that point, then we're in a position to proceed forward with final adoption. Obviously, if the state has some sort of issue with it that's unanticipated, then we'll make the appropriate adjustments. But we think, given the nature of the conversation we've had so far, there should be no reason not to proceed forward. If it's not on this meeting, then for the March 26th meeting for introduction, and we'll have the letter either before then or certainly in time to adopt at the first meeting in April then.
Sounds good.
That's it. Unless you have questions, or Ted has any further comments.
No, sir. Okay, fourth is the discussion of the M&amp;M Building. We're working diligently over there to get that building moving forward so we can make a appropriate deadline and get ready for spring use is the hope. One of the issues that came up is the gym floor. Mayor and council have in their book
Make it the H.
Option one and option two. Option one is the Indian head seal, which is what the photograph displays over the mayor's seat. And with or without a blue border that would basically outline the entire gym floor. And option two is a very, very large H, with or without the blue border, on both sides would read Hackensack Recreation. So I guess we could go with the traditional Ortony Indian chief, or they could switch it to the letter H. The only thing on the original diagram, it showed the Indian head facing the wrong direction. So obviously, the option would be, when you walk into the gymnasium, you're looking at either the burrow seal or the H facing you as you walk in. And the Hackensack Recreation would be inlaid on the floor there. So we just need to know. One other option is, would we add the volleyball game lines in there? The gym's going to be used for multi-purpose. I would assume that they would, but maybe someone has some ideas or what they want to do. But a decision needs to be made timely because they've just now delivered the flooring. It was either today or yesterday, because there were two truckloads there.
We're looking at, I have no problem with the H, and I like the Hackensack Recreation on the borderline on the end. Kathy brought up a great point. If you close the gate, the, when you split the courts into two, you're going to be cutting Mr. Oratam right in half.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay. So we're going to go with the H, we're going to go with the blue border, we're going to add the Hackensack Recreation, and we're going to
That's what I mean, gold.
What's going to be gold, the H or the Hackensack Recreation?
Hackensack Recreation.
Will that show on the floor being canned?
It's blue.
Oh, it's going to be on the blue part?
Yeah. Right there.
Okay.
And no comments?
No comments, right? No.
No, just the H, no comments.
I think that's a good idea. I like the H.
H?
Just don't want to cut what she or Tam in half.
I have a picture. I have this
This blue line, Ted?
Right?
It's going to be gray.
It's going to be gray?
That's for volleyball?
This one, yeah.
Blue inner rectangle, he's saying is going to be gray?
That's the volley, the volleyball court line should be a different color, it'd be gray.
Oh, okay. Now I get you. So we're going to have the H, so you walk in the door, the H is going to face you, we're going to have the blue border, we're going to have the Hackensack Recreation in gold, this is all blue, and this outline is in gray.
Can I just ask one question, Dave? When the court is fully open, so the H isn't cut in half, right, does the H face where the people are sitting, or no?
Yes.
The H is a H.
Yeah, but it
No, but if the H is this way, if they're sitting here
No, it goes this way.
Yeah, but if I'm sitting here, so I'm not looking, I'm looking at the H sideways, then?
Yeah, but what if you're sitting here?
No, but that's only
Because this is the entrance to the gym.
Yeah, but you're only sitting here when the court's split in half. You'll never see the H, you'll be sitting
Yeah, but if you're sitting here and it's split in half, you're only going to see a piece of the H.
But that's, that's okay.
If you're sitting here, you're only going to see half the H, because it's, Annette's going to be now.
I'm talking about basketball.
That's what I'm talking about.
All right, so when, when it's fully open, forget, forget about when it's cut in half, when it's fully open, right?
This H, doesn't matter whether you can
No, she's thinking this way.
Yeah.
It's still going to look the same.
Do they sit, when the court is open, do they sit here or here?
All over.
No, they don't.
All over, on the
When the court's fully open?
Two sides, and when you first walk in.
I thought, I thought Fran said, no, I thought Fran said it's either both sides or both sides, it's not all four at once, ever.
It's three sides, it's three sides, just seats on underneath the basket when you first walk in and underneath the other basket.
Are we sure? Because the way he explained it to me was that
This picture shows no bleachers here.
Right, but weighing the, you're seating for 400, yes?
Yes.
But there's never going to be seats in place for more than 200.
Right.
So when the court is fully open, where do the 200 sit?
They're going to sit here, here, and here.
And that's only going to be 200?
Yes.
I don't think so, but
I don't, to be honest, I don't know. I ain't answering that one.
I'll check with Fran.
I think, here's my only thing, that is, if the H is facing the door, and I like it facing the door, but think about it, then the whole time you're watching the game, if they're on the far sides, the H is going to be sideways, I guess it doesn't matter.
I'll ask, all right.
There's only one way to put a H. You can't make an H bathroom.
No, no, she's saying put it lengthwise.
I'm saying, I would think when the people are sitting there, when the H is there, they should see the H. You only walk in for a minute, but you're sitting there for the hour. Right? I don't know.
But if you're walking, if you're walking in, you'll see a, the H sideways when you're walking in from the street.
I think the H should be when you walk in.
But I'm just curious as to then, which way that people are going to be looking at the H, sideways or not?
They'll be looking at it sideways, but I think that'll be fine.
All right, as long as we know what we're doing, so we're going to look at it sideways.
When you walk in, is that blue space right here, when you walk in?
Yeah.
That H needs to be
Okay.
We are okay? I'll double check
We'll just find out what the seating is, I'm just curious.
Yeah, this, this by itself is about 180 to 200 here.
Let's just find out how the seating works to be sure. But I agree, let the H face the door, everybody likes that, let's do that.
Okay. My last issue is a discussion on pilots, and I've asked Deputy Mayor Cattistrino to share a few words because obviously, her and Albert and some Fran and some of us are very, very involved in the redevelopment of the city, and we want to make sure that people understand how these pilots work.
Just ask a question before she starts.
Sure.
Where are we at with the dog park, if you don't mind me asking?
There's a meeting to be established to look with Stephanie, I think it's either this week, later this week, or next week, to have a discussion on the plans before we present it publicly to get public comment. And they're moving forward.
All right, I'm sorry that Albert couldn't be here. For those of you that don't know, Albert's mom passed away, and again, you know, all our thoughts and prayers are with Albert and the family. So I'm going to take on the role here to just kind of review some things about pilots. The main reason that we're doing this is it seems like right now there's a lot of misinformation floating around, and we did have some speakers at our last council meeting talking about pilots and developers paying for schools and that this is going on and why this couldn't happen here. So I, we, Albert and I had spoken with our redevelopment attorney, and we tried to do a little bit more research, and to the extent that we could, we gathered as much information as possible so that we could share it with everyone here. In addition to that, Stephanie and I had our meeting with the, with the school board, we do the monthly meetings, and we also reviewed all of this with them. You know, I know we've talked about things like this with them before, but again, to make sure that the lines of communication are totally open, the information I'm going to go through with you tonight is exactly the type of information that we talked about with the school board representatives at our meeting as well. Okay, again, pilots, they're not an easy thing sometimes to understand or to grasp, so I'm going to try and take it from a different perspective. And let's just think about what they are, okay? So for folks that own property in a city, there's three ways that you can make payments to the city to support the city services and support the school services as well, right? The first one is the most common one, and that's regular taxes, and that's what everyone seems to understand the most, right? And the way your regular taxes are computed is your property is assessed a certain value, the city has a tax rate, multiply the tax rate times the assessed value, and that's the amount of money that you pay to support the services of the city, which include a small portion, about seven and a quarter percent of that money goes to the county, and the remainder of that money is close to evenly being split between the school and the city at this time. But that can vary based on, across the expenditures of the school and the city, but that's kind of where it is right now. Now, to encourage folks to do things, to encourage folks to make investments in areas of towns and cities that are considered blighted or almost blighted, so areas where you would not normally be making an investment, and the town or the city wants to encourage that investment, the state actually has two tools that they come forth with that they enable the cities to do, to use, right? One of them is a five-year tax abatement, and the other is a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. Let's talk about the five-year abatement first. Just to be considered for a five-year abatement, the property has to have a rehabilitation designation, right? What that means is the state defines certain criteria that have to be met, you know, the condition of the building, the condition of the sewers, there's a whole list of things that the state uses, and someone must go out, we use our planner, goes out and does a full study and documents all of this. He has to take pictures, he has to make a full presentation and prove this goes to the state, and prove to the state, yes, this particular area is in need of rehabilitation, right? Once that's done, and that's confirmed that this is a rehabilitation area, that doesn't mean they automatically can have a five-year tax abatement. They still come to the city, it just means that they are able to ask for or apply for one. Now, if you get a five-year tax abatement, the way that works is your original taxes will stay the same, it's just that the improvements that you've made to that will be phased in over five years. So instead of getting hit on day one with a huge increase, it lets you gradually do it, but within the, within the sixth year, so it's a five-year process, you will be up to paying full taxes. Now, the distribution of that money is the same as the regular taxes. Certain amount goes to the county, about small amount, seven and a quarter percent or so, and then the rest in our city is pretty much evenly divided almost between the city and the municipality. Then the third one is what we call the payment in lieu of taxes. Now, to, to even be eligible to apply for a payment in lieu of taxes, you have to have something called a redevelopment designation. It's a similar process to the rehab designation. The study has to be done, it has to be documented, it's just that the criteria is a little tougher, right? So to apply for that, you have to be able to make even more, have more extenuating circumstances that would say, yes, this particular property really needs or is in need of a full redevelopment. So once that happens, once the property meets those state requirements, what we do in our city, now this isn't a state requirement, but they're kind of leaning towards it, but it's something that we've done from pretty much day one, is we require the person requesting it to submit something called a fiscal impact analysis, all right? What the fiscal impact analysis does is it details all of the project's financials, it details any impact to the city, and that includes impacts to schools, sewers, et cetera. So all of that has to be documented, and the projected numbers are based on studies. For example, number of schoolchildren is based on Rutgers studies that they've done with comparable projects. So it's not like they just imagine or pull numbers out of the sky. This is a very detailed document. It shows their financials, shows the impact to the city or the schools, and it also shows the projection of, yes, if I am granted this payment in lieu of taxes, based on my numbers, here's what I'm projecting that the city would be receiving from the payment in lieu of taxes. All right, the city, the, the state allows you to base the payment in lieu of tax on two things, one of two things, either the cost of construction or the revenue in the city, the revenue that the property is making. We in the city always go with the revenue-based pilot, because, think about it, construction is static. Once that money is determined and a percent of that is paid, it's not going to grow over time. Where revenue is going to increase, you know, as, as, as cost of living is go up, rents go up, they will, the more money that the project makes, the more money the city makes. So you really are true partners together, you know, you're supporting each other in this. We want them to be successful because the more successful they are, the more successful we are. Now, the state requirement is that they pay somewhere between 10 and 15% of their gross revenue. So that is the way these are projected in these plans, and that is the way it's calculated, and that, those calculations are, again, reviewed and audited, our, our finance department, our CFO is involved in doing that and reporting it to the state as well. Excuse me. All right, the payments with the, the way the payments are distributed with a pilot is different than the other two. Payment in lieu of taxes, 5% of that goes to the county, and the remaining 95% of that money goes to the city. And there's reasons for that, all right? The reason for that is, to be declared in need of redevelopment, there's generally infrastructure requirements to make that project feasible. For example, looking, you know, at our downtown, we know there's sewer work that has to be done, there's street work that has to be done. One of the things even just to have developers come in to develop a main street, they wanted it to be a two-way street, not a one-way out of town. So all of the expenditures are really come back for the city to be funding, all of the infrastructure support required to make these developments happen. And that is primarily why the monies from these projects, or that's the basis for determining that the monies from these projects in this pilot goes directly to the city. Another add-on is, say they're extremely successful, I think there was maybe only a very few number of cases where this actually happened in Jersey City, there's another control. Say, for example, the rents really take off, you know, after a number of years, what they originally estimated to get their pilot, wow, they're far exceeding that. So the state has another requirement that these projects, should they make more than a 12% profit, that money comes back to the city as well. So you really are enabling a good, safe investment, for the most part, stable for them, because this way the developers are, can get the financing they need, and also projected well for the city, so that the city also shares in the profits of, of their success. Okay, so say we go through this scenario, and now, let's talk specifically about the payment in lieu of taxes, because that's a little bit more, it's a little bit more to it. Oh, and the timeframe as well, the state says that the timeframe for giving a payment in lieu of taxes would be somewhere between 10 and 30 years. So it starts at 10 years, and then you can make then increments, it's usually a 10-year or 15-year, 20-year, 30-year pilot. How do we decide in the city if we're going to even consider someone that already has a redevelopment designation for a pilot? First thing we do is, the question we ask is, does it align with the city's vision? Redeveloping our downtown is part of our, is part of our vision at this point. We've recently expanded it to include areas that are very close to the train stations, because we see that again as another area that's been grossly overlooked. But primarily, if you're going to receive a pilot in the city, it's going to be either central to the downtown or in the very close proximity to one of our train stations, or our train station, including the River Edge train station. And this way, what we promised to our residents is that we would maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods, and that's the second question. Does this project maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods? We're not putting apartments throughout the city in residential areas, in single-family home areas, we're maintaining those areas as they are. All our attempt was to focus the development in the downtown, because we see that as a way to certainly bring more revenue into the city without negatively affecting the rest of our residents. And then the third question, there's only three, the third question is, is there a financial return on our investment for the city? We're going to invest and say, we're going to let you be part of this process, what is in it for us? And that's where these fiscal impact analyses lay this out. And you hear me talk about this when we approve a lot of this, here's what they're paying now, and here's what they will be paying estimated in the first year of the pilot. And they will never pay less. A pilot can never pay less than what they are currently paying in taxes. So it can never go backwards, there's a minimum there. It can only go forward. And what this enables them to do is it enables these developers to get the financing they need so that they can get this project funded and make progress and move forward. Why are we doing this? Again, we need to bring more revenue into the city. It has been decades since we saw any significant residential project in our, in our downtown or in our riverfront area, right? This rehab zone was defined a number of years ago, just for the downtown. And what that rehab zone in the downtown did is it provided zoning for mixed use, and it provided the ability to have a five-year abatement only. So when any of these projects want it or need more than a five-year, they themselves pay for and go through the redevelopment study for them to be entitled to even apply for a pilot. So again, you have that other check and balance of maintaining that things are moving in the right direction. I think I said most of this stuff. In addition to providing some of this much-needed infrastructure support, and we know we've had problems with our sewers throughout, is we also want to provide tax relief for our residents. So by bringing more revenue is, and the bottom line is that eventually this will enable us to control and to keep the taxes level throughout the city for the municipal side. All right, so our question became, when we were thinking about this going back five years ago, do we leave the downtown as it is, all right, and not recognize its true potential? Or do we offer these payment in lieu of taxes as an incentive to get buildings started? And I think you see by driving up and down Main Street that our decision was, yes, we're going to take that step forward, and we're going to offer these incentives to bring development into the city. And the example we talk about a lot is what you see going on on East Camden Street right now, which was the old Oratani Field Club. They were paying $56,000 a year in taxes prior to their adventure into a 254-unit apartment complex. Year one pilot payment on that project alone is projected to be $700,000. So you say $56,000 a year, $700,000 a year, and in addition, you're taking a property that was really neglected and falling apart and making it into something that's really beautiful for the city. So the question I always get is, Kath, well, what would happen if you didn't give them a pilot, how much taxes would they be paying? And the answer to that is, they'd be paying $56,000, because without the pilot, they would not get the funding, the banks would not fund them, the amount of money that they needed, because what the pilot provides to the banking institutions is stability. They know that these folks are borrowing a lot of money, and they want their assurance that they're going to be a payback. So by the banks and the financial institutions knowing it's 10% of their revenue every year, they don't have to worry that they're not going to get their money, because they're assured they're going to get their money. I made notes, I'll try to stick to it, I'm sorry for turning the page. Okay, so where are we now? Currently, we only have one project open that's a payment in lieu of taxes, and that's the project here on the project here on State and Warrant. As of 2018, their pilot payment to the city was $266,000. So as of 2018, the only monies the city was receiving in a payment in lieu of taxes was $266,000 a year. We recently renegotiated that with them. This pilot was the one pilot that was defined before this council came into office, and it really was a little, not the best terms. So our renegotiating is going to take that $266,000 and up it to $468,000, which is good for us, and we'll start seeing that this year from that particular property. But we've also seen new development in town that was fully taxable. Since 2017, we've brought into close to another million dollars in new things. For example, The View, the apartments over on Polyfly by the entrance to Route 80, that's a fully taxable entity. Westy's, the self-storage, that's up in the north end, they bring in, pay a significant amount of taxes. Aldi's, the new food store on, on Main, the changes to Giant Food Market, okay, these were all fully taxable improvements. So we always look first to say, let's look at their financials, can this project survive paying full taxes? That's always our first choice. Second choice, can this project survive with a five-year abatement? That's our second choice. Third choice is, can it survive only with a pilot? And let's negotiate that pilot as aggressively in the favor of the city as possible. And Ted, I know Albert's not here, but Ted, you've been at a few meetings, and they get a little contentious, but I believe that the city is making excellent decisions in, in the financing of these particular, particular projects. We do have projections to increase these pilot payments over, up to 2024 is what we're looking at. And we're hoping to see that grow to about $5 million by 2021, and by $10 million by 2024. These are projects that we're all in various stages of negotiation with them. Now timelines are difficult to manage, and I talk to anyone who's ever done construction in their home, and they tell you, you're going to have a new kitchen in three months, and a year later, you're still waiting for your kitchen. So I'm giving you dates that the developers are giving us, but this timeline may slip a bit, because we're doing some rather extensive renovations and some rather extensive rebuilding in town. But this is for us, I think, a very safe, a very risk-mitigated plan to success for our downtown. Now, the misinformation, and there were some folks here at the last council meeting, I get calls at my house, there was questions, Stephanie attends the advisory meeting, is, let's get the developers to pay for a new school. All right, other folks, other towns are doing this. So I've done some research, and it's very hard to do research, because this information is not really captured anywhere in a, in a simple place, you have to do a lot of looking and searching, but I'll, I'll tell you pretty much what's going on, and, and why that really isn't a realistic option. First of all, you can't go in and ask a developer to build you a new school. I explained to you what a pilot is, you know, it's negotiated 10 to 15% of their revenue, the state has to give it its blessing, it's not like you can go in and just say, hey, I'd like you to build us a new school. All right, let's talk about Jersey City, because folks are talking about Jersey City. Up until very recently, Jersey City was an Abbott district, they recently are moving out of that environment. But Abbott districts, the state builds all of their schools for free. So pretty much the building that was going on in Jersey City for schools was really based pretty much on state financing alone. Bottom line is, Jersey City's been doing this for 20 to 30 years, we just started. Right, Jersey City currently receives, you holding your hat, $139 million a year in pilot payments, compared to our $266,000. In 2017, they started to give 10% of their pilot payment to their school. Again, they were 20, 30 years into this, so the infrastructure payments that the city had to do are winding down, or pretty much over, where we're just beginning. They brought up, people brought up Woodbridge. Okay, again, Woodbridge has been doing, not Woodbridge, Woodbridge, Woodbridge has also been doing pilots for a while, and according to a recent newspaper article, they are anticipating $30 million a year in pilots. So again, $30 million a year to our $266,000 a year. They are funding a bond for a new school from their pilot money. So what they're doing is they're making the payment to the school bond. But the school they're funding is a school that's $44 million of a bond. So of their $30 million that they're receiving in pilot money, they're paying maybe not even 10% of that money, again, to offset that bond. Third one, other one that I could find is North Bergen. North Bergen is receiving about $2.5 million in pilots right now, and they expect a very large increase should they build this power plant that everyone's talking about. Again, they're looking to bond for a school for their town, but it's again, a $34 million bond that they're looking, and they're receiving $2.5 million plus anticipation of way more if this power plant gets built. So that kind of gives a perspective to, if it happens, that's where it's happening. Where we are now is we're just not there yet, we're just starting. All right, and our commitment to the schools has always been, and we reinforced it at our meeting with them, as these buildings open, continue to give us, if you see students, the number of students. If there is an impact on your schools, we will sit down with you, and we will give you money to support that impact, absolutely. Again, these analyses say, and don't project that there's going to be a lot of kids, or a very small number of children in the schools, but I agree, we don't know. Until we get through it, we don't know, and we've made that promise and that commitment, that if there is an impact to the school, wherever we are financially at that point, we'll sit down and we'll work together and work it out. Also, down the line, you know, when we're now, if we get to that point where we are bringing in $10 million in revenue every, every year, I think that, and we can afford the infrastructure, remember, we're going to be in the process of, Ted didn't talk about it tonight, but of doing sewer separation for the city, which an old estimate was $80 million bill, and we know that's going to be an expensive project, but needs to be done, because it's a quality of life issue for many of our citizens in town. So we want to use some of this money to be able to fund that as well. We're not now, and we never plan to be Jersey City or Woodbridge. We're not planning on 20 and 30-story buildings, that's not who we are. We have one building that we're projecting on Main Street that's going to be 14 stories, everything else is five or six stories. This is, this is, we want to make this downtown also an amenity for our residents, a place that you want to go in the evening, maybe go for dinner, or go to a show, or, or enjoy an evening out in the downtown. It's not going to turn into this massive development that you see in these towns. So things can change, I mean, I guess I can always hope for a lot more money, but to, to me, I see if we can get to this $10 million mark by 2024, that's almost 10% of our city budget. So that would be huge for us to be able to accomplish a lot of these tasks. So recap the facts, as far as we can determine, developers are not paying for schools, this is not a negotiated item. Now, I believe there was one case in Jersey City I was able to find where there was, oh, they built like a head start nursery school into the building, because I think the owners of the property had something to do with the school, and it was like beneficial to both. That's the only thing I could find that was kind of part of the development, but in general, that does not happen. Cities that have been and still are collecting these large amounts of money from their pilots, they may be using a percentage of that to, to, to help finance some funding to do some things in their schools, and when we're there, we'll talk about doing that too, we're just not there. In addition, the schools that are being built are $34 to $44 million bonds, not even close to the $170 million bond that we were, that was being proposed here. So to summarize those facts, we're at the very beginning of redevelopment. We've always said that this type of redevelopment does not support schoolchildren, as documented in their analysis, and supported by the Rutgers study. But if we see that happening, we will certainly sit down and work with the schools financially. We in no way want to cause any undue hardship to the schools. In addition, we've come to realize that these pilot payments can reasonably fund a lot of the infrastructure improvements we need in the city, and that's our real goal, is to accomplish this without hurting our taxpayers. One other thing to think about, and I wasn't sure if I was going to even talk about this, but it's just a couple more bullets, when you pay your taxes, it's a single check you write, yes? So if your taxes increased by $100, let's say, does it matter to you that the $100 came from the school and the city tax was flat? Or is it more important to you that it's $50 and $50 because the city gave its money to the schools to make it look even? That, that's, to me, as a resident, I want to understand where that increase came from, and accept that, I understand, here's why it had to go up, this had to happen, and accept that, rather than try and muddy the waters with saying, hey, just give us some of that money so that we're both showing a similar increase. I, I don't think that that's the right approach. Eyes of 2019, I think most of us have read in the paper, our schools here in town, we got the largest increase in state aid this year for the, throughout the county, and I think that's great, great news for us. The city, the state, the, the schools will be receiving $22 million in state aid this year, which is wonderful. All right, but this is an increase of approximately $8 million over the last three years. So our state aid to our schools has increased substantially. The city would never think of asking the schools for a portion of this $22 million, because it's meant to be for the schools. And the same is true of the pilot or the payment in lieu of. There's very little way that the city gets extra revenue, and this is something the state has provided, so that towns, cities like ours that are aging can update their infrastructure. Cities also in the process of paying back $30 million in tax appeals, I know you've heard us talk about this before. The city didn't receive that whole 30 million, right? Remember, I told you how the taxes go, small percent goes to the county, and about half goes to the school, and half goes to the city? So we only got maybe 13 million of that 30 million, but we have to pay it all back. The school, we don't, can't go to the school and say, hey, give us the 12 million you received, or to the county and give us, that's not the way it works, and we're not complaining about that. That's the rule. So what, when pilots were put in place to help the cities, that was the rule. So let's understand, that's what it is, that's how it works. We'll be very happy to answer anyone's questions, we said this to the school as well, and our intent is to work with them and to get the much-needed renovations done as soon as possible. And that's, I think, a commitment from everyone that's sitting here, absolutely. So let's take a step back, and I know it's difficult to understand some of these things, it's easy to understand, yeah, somebody's, the developer's going to walk in and buy us a new school, that's really easy to understand. It's not so easy to understand how this really works. So my intent tonight was to try and, once again, enlighten folks, give you a few more facts, and hopefully I didn't overdo it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kath. I just want to, if I could just real, add to that some quick notes I wrote. All this work going on too creates a tremendous amount of jobs in the area, all right, tremendous amount. It's going to create a very vibrant pedestrian-friendly downtown, which is what we want. It's going to create a lot of new businesses coming into the rehab zone, which again will create even more jobs, people are going to have to work in those places. But as Kathy said, the pilot program is a state program designed to help aging downtowns redevelop that are in need of rehabilitation. The money from these pilots are meant to repair our aging infrastructure, which it's doing, and to give tax relief to the residents, which it will do, and to also create a vibrant downtown. So those are the main goals here, and by 10, 2024, we're going to be looking, sitting pretty, so I'm looking forward to that.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers, fingers crossed. Just want to go back to the, if you look at your pictures again, I just noticed something that kind of explains itself here. When the two courts are open, the white baseline, right, you see it's, these seats would be in, because they're going right through the seats. This is basketball right here. So these would be closed. I counted each one, there's 100, 200, 300, 400 seats. So when you're playing full court, these are open, when you're playing.
That's what I thought, that's what I understood.
This is up against the wall.
So you'll never have three open at once, it'll either be two or two.
It'll be two, right.
Right, I was just, so, all right, so to answer my question, not that it matters, but to answer my question, when it's fully open, are they looking at the H or are they looking at the H sideways?
When it's fully open, they should look at, no, they'll be looking at the H sideways. Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
I have nothing else that would complete the city manager's agenda.
Okay, with that, I need a motion open to the public.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, you will have three minutes.
Regina DePasco, Parker Avenue. Okay, so I understand there's no additional on the pilots, no additional tax due until they, they make some money, and then 95% of that goes to the city and 5% goes to the county, and none goes to the schools because infrastructure. However, in the meantime, are they paying the base tax on the land, and will the school continue to get their 43% on the land, even though there's a pilot?
The taxes are maintained on the property even during the redevelopment, all taxes that the Board of Education would be owed is paid.
When the pilot kicks in and the revenue payments are made?
The taxes don't go down, the property taxes are paid, and whatever percentage the Board of Education would receive will continue to receive it.
So that's stagnant, because as you said, if they didn't build it, still would be stagnant, so, okay, unless the, well, I don't know, my land magically increases by leaps and bounds for no reason. All right, that's what I wanted to know, that the school is still getting 43%, 7% goes to the county, 50% to the city of the base tax on the land. Okay.
Until the pilot kicks in.
Ted, Regina, if I may, I think that that, I think that recently, from our attorney, that was our original intent, Regina, but I believe that recently that has changed. Jim is here, yes? I think that, what, that was the old arrangement. Let me check with Brian and make sure when it goes into effect, but I think that that...
What's the change?
The change may be that all of it is incorporated into the pilot payments based on...
So they lay nothing on the land, that's what I thought.
I will confirm that with our attorney who's not here, but I believe that that may be the new change. Although the land is the small, the land is, yeah, the land is the smaller of the piece, they do pay full tax until the pilot kicks in, that's absolutely correct, but once the pilot payment starts, I believe the change is that they will now pay everything through the pilot, yes.
Next.
But I will let you know next week, Regina, I want to make sure when that went into effect.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gary. Tom LoCicero, I'm the owner of Ballpoint Auto and Towing at 30, 314 Second Street. Sure. I have a question on Resolution 106-19 on the ordinance of vehicles and traffic with the commercial vehicle parking. In the ordinance, I read through and I tried to find it, there's a Schedule 6 that lists the streets of commercial vehicles being banned to park on, I couldn't seem to find that anywhere.
Mine's on the inside.
106-19.
With Schedule 6 of this chapter, so if you look there, sorry.
If you look, there is a reference to Chapter 17055 of the City Code, if you just give me a second, I'll pull it up.
Yeah, I did pull it up on the computer, and it didn't list any streets. I'm trying to find out what streets are going to be included in this ordinance.
Just give me a second here. I'll just take a minute to pull this up. You can put his time on hold while we sort this.
Do you say parking, come on, overnight parking?
Yeah, this is, this is the ordinance that prohibits...
Commercial vehicles in residential areas.
Parking in residential areas, yes.
It doesn't say anything about overnight.
No, it's, it's parking other than stopping to do a delivery or something.
Exactly.
If you're not actively engaged in the property, it can park.
I understand, so that's what we're trying to find out, is what streets are included in that.
Just give me a minute.
I thought it was all R1 zones.
Yeah, I would think it would be all the R1 zones.
Trucks over.
R2s, I mean, anything, that's all. And even R twos, I mean, anything, that's all. The all R ones, R twos, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you look in Chapter one seventy, Section fifty-five, there's a reference to Schedule Six, trucks over four tons excluded. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter one seventy dash thirteen, trucks over four tons gross weight are hereby excluded for the following described streets or parts of streets, except for the pickup and delivery of materials on such streets. And it starts Anderson Street from Summit Avenue to Linden Street, and then it goes down Broadway to Talba, Clinton, Coles, Davis, Elm, Euclid, so on and so forth, um, down to Willow Avenue. Here, I'll...
Is Second Street included in that?
No, Second Street is not on the list.
Okay, so we can still park our, we don't park trucks overnight, but we do have to park there during the day, um, to run our businesses.
So if you look in the City Code, see, this is Chapter one seventy fifty-five, and this is the list.
It's not on this list, so, unless that, you know, again, you, you always need to check and make sure that there's no been, no later amendments to this, but it's not on the list as I see it.
Okay. So what, so what I'm being told is that Second Street will not be part of this ordinance?
Yeah, that's what you say.
That's right. It's not inclusive with this point, no. I, I, it, it, it lists by street, it does not list by zone. So, you know, one seventy fifty-five lists, you know, like you said, a whole bunch of streets, um, you know, Maple Avenue, entire length, Poplar, entire length.
There's manufacturing.
Yeah, so, um, so, so the refer, the reference is correct in the ordinance to the, the correct citation. And so on these streets that are listed in Chapter one seventy fifty-five, um, you know, you're not allowed to park any vehicle, uh, above four tons gross weight unless you're actively picking up or delivering materials. With respect to any other street that's not listed in one seventy fifty-five, whatever parking rules and regulations are in place for that location will continue to apply without change. I can't speak to what those rules and regulations are, you'd have to, you know, investigate that, looking at the City Code for a particular location that's not on this list.
The man said R one and R two, can we look into that? Maybe they missed some streets? Not today or whatever, but...
Well, I mean, we could certainly, you know, you, you, we could certainly send one seventy fifty-five to whoever would be appropriate to review this and see if there should be any additions or deletions from those streets, if there are locations where the, the council believes that parking of larger vehicles would be appropriate. Because I'm not clear, you know, how those streets came to be. The last ordinance change there was two thousand seven.
So we probably should take that, we could pass it, but if it was to be amended, our land use officer should go through and, and just tune that up.
Of course, there may be portions of the street. I mean, my thing would be more the reverse, where I would be more concerned, like, say there were, I don't know this to be a fact, but say there were portions of Second Street that were residential or R ones and R twos, then those portions shouldn't allow trucks to be parked there overnight.
Yeah.
But I don't know the answer to that question. I think somebody has to look at the zone.
Yeah, that, that would be outside my level of expertise, that's for sure.
It could have to be the land use, the building department.
You're not talking about overnight, you're talking about during the day.
Anytime.
Yeah, yes, I mean, this, this is, uh...
Designation of a street doesn't necessarily have to mean Second Street from one end to the other, it could be a section of the street.
That's right, that's right.
That's what needs to...
Yeah, I mean, really, there, there's not, there's not much change because right now, these, these, um, these trucks are already excluded from these streets or parts of streets, except for the pickup or delivery of materials. Um, really, all this ordinance does is explicitly authorize the towing of those vehicles. But if you look at A and B, those are already part of the ordinance, and it already prohibits, um, this. All it does is give us another option so that if we find it, we can actually, instead of just ticketing it, and then it sits there for three days, we can actually physically tow it.
That part, part of the ordinance that we're discussing actually was in Ford, was already there.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, right, right now, it is already prohibited, any truck over four tons gross weight is already excluded from those streets or parts of streets, except for the pickup and delivery of materials on such streets. All this says is, if we find it, we're going to tow it now. And that was the authority that, um, the constable and the city manager indicated because if we towed it right now without that authority, someone could very much say, well, why'd you tow my vehicle? Yeah, you can write me a ticket. But this, all this does is give us some additional, um, ability to deal with this.
This gentleman is, has been parking his vehicles there safely and will continue to do so based on that.
That's right. I mean, right, right now, if he's got a vehicle over four tons gross weight, it's not supposed to be on the street at all, except for the pickup and delivery of materials on those streets. So that's already a rule, I'm, you know, a lot of places have signs that say, you know, trucks over four tons excluded, except for, you know, delivery, or, I don't know if we have any signage like that, but, you know, if not, we could do that.
How heavy is your, your flatbed truck?
It's over four tons. You know, the, the way I read the ordinance was that it, it was residential areas. So we are, businesses have been there long before there was any zoning laws. We're in a, we're a business in a non-conforming residential area. So my business has been there for many, many years, and, and next door and down the street have all been there for long, since the nineteen twenties. So we utilize the street as we need to, and we park our vehicles legally, and at night they all come off of the street. The way I understand this ordinance came into effect, not only for the, for, over four tons, but the tractor trailers, was people were leaving them on the streets overnight, and they were, you know, using the city streets as a parking area for their tractor trailers and, and big trucks. At night, we bring all our vehicles off of the street. I don't know of any commercial vehicles that are left on the street after business hours.
Well, you know, you know, and, and again, we're, we're going back and forth, I mean, theoretically, we're supposed to have, you're right. In terms of timing, we're actually supposed to have, this, this, this is for adoption, right? Tonight? We, we actually have to legally have a public hearing on this, and, and so we probably should save this till the eight o'clock, if you're able to stay. When we open the public hearing, there is no time limit, we can continue this discussion at a more appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from the public?
Evening. John Evans, Lincoln Street, two items. Uh, one, I'd like to call out Bridget McLaughlin in the Building Housing Land Use Department. She was very helpful to me, explaining some plan changes on property adjacent to mine. Uh, I think she does a good credit, she, good credit, uh, to the, uh, to the, to the city. Something a little bit more, uh, critical with respect to the, um, winter November twenty nineteen newsletter, and its references to road repaving. Specifically mentioned in the newsletter was repaving in two thousand eighteen, three streets in the Fairmont section, which I live in, Elm, Fairmont, and North Prospect. And, and I disagree with that. Uh, Elm Avenue has been patched numerous times, and actually was last repaved during the Seiza administration. Uh, Fairmont was repaved in two thousand seventeen, not two thousand eighteen. And finally, North Prospect was listed, uh, it was listed in that newsletter, shows no sign of being repaved, or in fact, need of same. Uh, as, as far as I can determine, in two thousand eighteen, only a couple of blocks on Lewis Street were, were indeed repaved. The state of roads in the Fairmont section, uh, is a particularly irritant, uh, to, to residents, and indeed a risk to property values. My street, Lincoln, uh, has been repatched almost every year of the twenty I've lived there, and if you need, uh, bone-rattling experience, take a drive up Cartelpa. Now, the newsletter did announce more street pavings are in the works, uh, this year. That's good enough, uh, but I would request that we do the job properly, and that's remove the pavement, resurface the roadbed, that's repaving, and be upfront with taxpayers. To that end, I would request the council's commitment to bring plans for repaving before this meeting for public comment.
Go ahead.
I'm up. The city of Hackensack has set aside two million dollars for repaving, milling and repaving. There is a complete list of the streets that we're going to pave in two thousand and nineteen. We have reached out to our utility companies to make sure that we're not, repaving roads are going to be dug up again. Annette brought that, um, conclusion up the other day. And we have hired a traffic engineer to do a five-year assessment of our roads. So obviously, yeah, some of this does not require an engineering degree to look at some of these roads and go, oh my God, we need to fix this, because some of them are bumpier than a goat path, I get that. But we are looking at a long-term plan, a vision of replacement, and to set aside the, the proper funding to address these roads. I, I might as well say it in this meeting, I'll say it in the next one. We've also hired an outside contractor that's going to assist us in, um, pothole patching that is commencing, and we're also putting out two crews. So if we could get our weather to cooperate, there is a full court press on repaving and pothole to address these conditions. I have to say that all this, it's sixty-one day and then turns, you know, twenty below zero, really raises hell with all of our utilities and infrastructure underneath, and certainly our roads. This cold patch doesn't work. We throw it in, and the frost goes in and bang, it pops back out, and it's almost, um, you know, futile to, to do that. But we are in the process. But there will be an identification of the streets that we're going to repave. I'll make sure that that list is made public, um, once we have a full commitment. We have an engineer that's going to do a five-year study, and we're addressing the potholes.
Good. Okay, yes, just as long as that's made, made public for public comment. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Canestrino, I thought your explanation, the pilot program was exceptional, and it lines up with very much how I view the prudent handling of the city's finances. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one from the public, I need a motion to close the, uh, to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section seven B seven and seven B eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to few matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within ninety days, or at such time as the interest of the city do not require confidentiality.
I have a number of things to speak about, but, um, not, uh, litigation at the moment. So, um, if we end up discussing any cases, we'll announce them at the end of the closed session.
See everybody at, uh, eight o'clock. Good evening, everybody. Deputy Mayor Canestrino will be with us shortly, but to save some time, we're going to, I need a motion to come out of, uh, council of the whole.
Offer.
Executive session, need a motion?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Motion to, uh, close the council of the whole?
Um, you want to?
Just to note, we did end up talking about a couple of ongoing litigations, uh, involving former Chief Zisa and a lawsuit filed by Jason Nunnermacher.
Okay, thank you.
And then you need a motion to, um, close the council?
Need a motion to close the council session?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?